Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our special board meeting. We will call the board meeting to order, and I will ask tonight if Dr. Volkermer, if you can lead us in the pledge.
It would be my honor. Please stand and join me in the pledge to our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Volkermer. Or shall I say the NAV? But you know what that means. Okay, we are now at 1.3 approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. And is there a...
Second.
All right, it's been moving properly second. If there is no other discussion, I will go ahead and take the vote. And I'll call names because I think a couple of board members are not here. But Dr. Flores.
Aye.
Ms. Sabios. I know I saw her on. Ms. Sabios. Okay, thank you. Dr. Hill.
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt.
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina.
Aye.
Mr. Tillman.
Aye.
Right, and Dr. Dottie Rogers. I motion carry. Thank you. All right, we are now moving to public comments. And Ms. Cunningham, are there any comment, public comments?
We received one, but I don't believe she's here. I will call her name. Give me one second. Right. Forgot it. Okay. Jasmine Masias, if you're there. She's not here.
Okay.
Okay.
Keep an eye out. All right, thank you so much. We will now move to 3.0 presentations. 3.1 budget update.
I'm getting the latest known. And this is Dr. And thank you. It's finally I'm here. And so I just wanted to give a high level overview. I had a chance to, even though this is my first board meeting. And and first of all, I want to say that I really appreciate the opportunity to be here and then to work with the board. And so behind the scenes, I had an opportunity to work with the team on their budget. And so tonight, I wanted to let you know that you're going to hear an update on the additional state and federal funds that's going to be received. And many of these, many of these dollars are really one time dollars that we have or will receive to support students. You know, obviously, on the other side of this pandemic. And then keep in mind that these changes to the state budget will continue to evolve, right? It's not set in stone as of yet. So as you know, the governor recently rolled out his May revision. And in the beginning of this, you know, at the beginning of this budget adoption process for the 2122 school year, and the state and the Senate recently submitted their budget proposals. But they're different than what the governor had submitted. So budget negotiations are continuing, going to continue to play out over the next couple of weeks. So keep that in mind as you're thinking about the final budget in terms of the district's concern. Now, prior to my arrival as superintendent, the district had already been gathering input from our community and our stakeholders through the LCAP process, the input meetings, and also during the development of the return to school roadmap. So they've been getting a lot of feedback and input. So moving forward, you will see, and I'll share this at a later date, the my superintendent entry plan, that will include, include a, which includes a robust listening and learning campaign. Will, it's going to help us provide those themes and those ideas and areas of strength for the district and then also opportunity for improvement. So just keep that in mind as well. So I'm going to meet, it's going to take me about six months. But when they're going to share tonight, these current budget allocations, they allow time for us to allocate funds. So I want to be very clear. It allows time for us to allocate funds based on the district needs right now. And then also those identified needs will be really finalized once I finish this listening and learning campaign. And we complete a lot of student pre-assessments and so on. So I want to, I want to be clear here that we have to be cautious because we have to ensure that the one time funding is obviously allocated to one time expenditures. But at the same time, we have to provide a robust support program to students. So but keep in mind, most importantly, as I turn it over to Janie, that our students will be assessed when they return to school and we'll be able to determine their immediate, you know, their, 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 their needs around academic, social, emotional wellness and health needs. But again, just keep in mind that we don't have to spend all the dollars right away. We have to have a plan. We have to be patient on this plan. And so we'll engage, we'll jump right in, but I'll turn it over to Janie at that point in time. Or actually, is it, I think, is Rachel jumping in first?
Yes. As you're moving forward, maybe perhaps Ms. Christakos is going to do this, but we would like to do a formal introduction of Mr. Solins is on the line.
Oh, yeah. Is Mrs. Solin on the line?
Yes, he is.
I am here, yes.
He's in box number four in my screen.
Yeah, before we get started, Janie, would you like to introduce our newest member of cabinet who will officially start in July? But he's here with us now.
Yes, board and community, let's welcome, give a warm welcome to Mr. Harold Solins. He will be the new associate superintendent of business service starting July 1. And we're so thankful that he could attend this budget workshop. Welcome, Harold.
Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here with you all.
Thank you, Harold. All right, well, I will get us started. So thank you, Mr. Irvin, for the introduction. And again, welcome to San Bernardino City Unified. You will just love the community, love the staff, and most importantly, you will fall in love with our children. And good evening, Dr. Rogers, Dr. Wyatt, board members, community cabinet. We are going to do a high level overview of the budget. And so my part of it, of course, Ms. Christakos will go into the detail of the, of the budget numbers. But I will give, and then I will link it to some of the, the actual program work that we're doing as a district. So if we can go to the next slide, I'll give the objectives. So tonight, we want to make sure that we outline for the board how and by when funds may be invested to accelerate services and supports for students. Provide an overview of how SBCUSD will use the funds to accelerate these supports for students while also working on laying a groundwork for long term transformation. Because as Mr. Irvin shared, some of the funds are, many of the funds actually are one time expenditures. So we want to use them to build infrastructure and again groundwork so we can transform the district into what we know it can and should be for our scholars. And then finally, finally, this evening, to utilize input already gathered through the LCAP process to expand access to high quality education and support services. We want to make sure the board knows that the various LCAP input meetings that we have had throughout this school year have informed how the funds that we have received from the federal government are being expended or have been expended. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Christakos, and she'll give a, she'll start with some driver slides on resource allocation.
Thank you, Dr. Menares. Next slide, please. So board, over the last year, we've received a variety of funds, which, as you know, we've given updates all year long around how those funds were spent to ensure that our students and staff were returning to school and work in a safe environment. A lot of funding was used for technology and learning support, as well as PPE and sanitizing supplies and equipment. And these are the various sources that we've had over the past year. They were all one time and they are all expended. So we just wanted to give you that overview. Next slide, please. So as we look at this slide, I think it was board member Sabios that asked, you know, what's one time and what's ongoing? So I wanted to provide this to you as well. We expect to receive ESER 2 funding of 102.4 million. It is one time and we have till September of '23 to spend it. We have ESER 3 funding coming, and it's 227.9 million. Have till September of '24 to spend it. Again, it's one time. And then the AB86 Expanded Learning Grant, that came to board at the last meeting, and you approved the spending plan. Ms. Applegate presented that to you, and it's $42 million, .1 million. Now, we'll talk about it today because we're leveraging those state dollars with the ESER 2 and 3 funds to ensure the most robust, robust support for our students. As of now, the May revise has an LCFF COLA of 5.07%. Now, I'm going to talk a little bit more about this later. We didn't get, receive a COLA this year. It's about $24 million. And we'll show how that's used to pay for expenses related to the salary schedule. Now, in the governor's proposal, he recommended moving the concentration grant to 65% of our base grant up from 50%. The legislate, the legislature is not, we're hearing, they haven't been specific that they want it much lower so more districts can receive funding. So we're going to have to wait for that state adoption to find out exactly what additional funds will have for our supplemental concentration, which will be incorporated into the LCAP. And so that total funding, three, almost 397,000, most of it one time. And then I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Menares.
All right, and before you begin, Dr. Menares, Mr. Tillman.
Yes, thank you. First, I want to start by welcoming Mr. Irvin and Mr. Solins. Welcome aboard. Look forward to working with you all. Can we go back to the slide? The one that showed the $92 million that we spent already?
Yes, it's right here.
And can I get an idea, just in like, some of these are big numbers. So does anyone know just in high level, for instance, on the CARES Act, ESSCR, what that 25 million was spent on?
So, Mr. Tillman, I have a broad over the whole 91 million. We could get you the breakdown, but technology was approximately 31 million. So that's Chromebooks and Hotspots or Kajit's. The learning supports were 12 million. PPE and sanitizing supplies and equipment was...
Ms. Christakos, when you say learning support, what's an example of a learning support?
So, you know, there were packets, there were other instructional supports that the teachers needed to adjust to distance learning. Ms. Applegate could probably give you some more examples than that. And so, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Christakos. Yes, we did have learning bundles for TK through third grade that were purchased for all grade levels, sent out to all students. We also had incurred quite large printing costs for all the other materials that teachers wanted. There were extra duty hours as well for all the planning of the curriculum guides and all the resources. We also did purchase Imagine Learning and some of the other digital platforms to support distance learning. So most of that was everything that we needed for distance learning.
And that was out of the line three?
You know, Mr. Tillman, I just put together, we just took all of the funding and then just what was everything spent on. I didn't have it break, broken out by each line, but we could get that.
And I just want to do it for a positive perspective. I think it's important that the public understands what we spent this money on. It was one time money. It was to address the immediate need. So I think it's just, it's good just to be clear. You could use the same numbering system. It'd just be good to have a breakout of what it was. I mean, even to the extent where we say technology, if we bought, you know, 30,000 Chromebooks and 2,000 iPads, whatever it was, I think it's important to make sure that the public knows what we spent their dollars on.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. We can incorporate that in our presentation, budget presentation next week.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Dr. Flores?
I also wanted line item analysis of our expenditures of the 92 million. And just to be transparent with the public, so that everyone knows exactly where it was spent. So I agree with Mr. Tillman.
And I think that is Ms. Rosales Medina's comment. She, the same thing. So again, back to what we had talked about in the previous LCAP, it just makes it more transparent and helpful for us as we speak with the community.
Hey, Dr. Rogers?
Yes.
Dr. Rogers?
Yes.
So I would say that, yeah, on the itemized breakdown, what I'll do is I'll work offline with the team, and we may be able to get that to the board in a Friday update. But also, we'll be able to find a way to attach it for the next board meeting. So this way, we don't have to go through the whole thing, but we'll attach it as part of the presentation as well. So we'll get it to the board and itemize, and then we'll also make sure we try to attach it at the next agenda. Even though we've reviewed the agenda, let me see if there's a way that we can attach that so it's there. Janie, I think we should be able to do that, but we'll touch base offline. So this way, that will help speed things along in the future. Okay.
Madam President, I forgot I had another question. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Can you forward it to the last slide that we had? That one, yeah. So just for clarification, we have not itemized expenditures of any of these budget items, correct?
So Dr. Flores, a little bit later in the presentation, we'll show you the broad categories. And again, there's three years to spend most of the money, so we'll show you those categories. And then as Superintendent Irvin had talked about, as he, as kids return and we need to adjust to additional or different needs, we'll be making amendments to the budget. And I, we're going to show the timeline where that will be coming to the board in July.
So CARES Act 2, is that 2 and 3? Yeah. It, does that money provide for COVID testing of our kids?
I don't know if that's in the plan. I'd have to look, Dr. Flores, but we do have, I'll find out for you.
Okay, because, you know, I've been listening a lot to, you know, CDC and also Fauci and the team and also scientists. And they are saying that we may get variants of COVID. And we should be having a robust also testing of our children before we get the vaccinations for the kids. So I just want to, Mr. Irvin, welcome. And I just wanted to just put that, you know, red flag in our, in our hats, so.
As we get more information on that, Dr. Flores, on what the guidelines are in return in regards to testing students and so on, I think we'll come back to the board at a later date with that. But right now, I don't know if there's really clear guidance on that. So, yeah, definitely, that's something we'll take under consideration. But I would ask that we be patient until we get more guidance and more information regarding whether that's going to be requirement or not. And if it is, and obviously, we'll deal with it. But yeah, we'll definitely look into where they are with that in terms of requiring students to be tested and so on. So, okay.
Thank you.
And then whether or not those monies can be used for that or not, I'm not sure. I haven't heard that or seen that. But Janie, I think we can, we can get you that information. And then we can loop back with the entire board.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
If I could add to that, Mr. Irvin, what we are doing in terms of testing is we are in the process of reviewing. We put out a request for proposal, request for proposal? Yes, I think that's what it's called, to find an agency or a group that can provide what we're calling COVID liaisons at each one of our schools. And those liaisons will be health professionals, and they will be able to do the screening of our students and, and the testing as necessary. And that's part of the requirement that they, we have asked of them in order to qualify for this, this contract with us. So we do have some of that in place for, or we're getting it in place for the school year. Won't be ready for our summer sub program, but it will be ready for next school year.
Dr. Flores and Rachel, clarity. Also, I believe hearing, I believe some of that may be in the plan as well, Rachel, but we'll confirm offline. But I believe it is in the plan going forward.
It is. It's, it is, it's, it's planned for. So it's probably already, it's budgeted, I believe, in the previous slide.
Okay, great. We'll get back with the board on that, even as part of a Friday update, Rachel and team. Dr. Dottie Rogers will include that in a Friday update as well, that information.
Thank you. Dr. Menares, no other questions?
Okay, great.
Do, I do have a, I have a question, I'm sorry. I put it in. Okay. Yeah, and I just wanted to remind, still for transparency purposes, I do agree with Mr. Tillman what he mentioned to have it shown by line item, or at least the, the top several points of what we spent on. And we've done this as a great example for Mr. Irvin to know that we have, for LCAP purposes, we've shared long lists at the board meeting. So we have done that before. For transparency purposes, I think we should be sharing that publicly as well. Maybe create a format where we can do that. But I wouldn't want just us were to receive that if the public had questions on what the monies are being spent, or at least for them to view it. I think that would be a great way to do it as well.
Okay, we'll go back with the team and talk that through.
All right, thank you. I expect that, thank you.
All right. Okay, Dr. Menares.
Okay. So with that, if we can go to the next slide? All right. So, Dr., Mr. Irvin already spoke to this, but we, you know, there is a timeline for planning and budgeting. And so we want to recognize that our new superintendent has just come on, it's day two for him. And so he will have a robust listening and learning tour, where he will be meeting with various stakeholder groups, community members, and just getting a very large picture of what is happening in our district and where things should go. And so we want to give time to that. And thankfully, because of what Ms. Christakos just shared, we have that time. We don't have to budget everything that has come to us from the federal government right now. We can come back, and we will come back in July to share priorities and any new state dollars that are actually for sure to us from the state. Then we have an opportunity to do a 45 day budget revision in August. We will come back in October and let you know how things are going in terms of our academic achievement expenditure and, and what the data is looking like for our scholars. And then, of course, the December 1 interim. And while that's going on, Superintendent Irvin will be out and about, meeting with people and collecting data. So we want to be sure that we are thoughtful and intentional on how we use these funds to accelerate learning services and supports for our scholars. So keep that in mind as we go through this, that we have, we don't have to allocate everything, and it's not intended to, it's intended to help support students and our staff and our families over a time period. The next slide then takes us to the conversation that's really happening both federally and at a local level. This is just one example of a research brief that comes from California. And there is a lot of conversation about reimagining and rebuilding our schools, you know, and restarting them. This brief is about starting with equity at the center. And so we chose a quote that really just identifies that we want to build toward an education system that places equity at the center. We know that's been a longstanding priority for our board. And as we come out of this pandemic and we're on the other side, as Mr. Irvin likes to say, with these new funds, how do we leverage that and prepare our system so that we are that leader in equity and for our students? So we have to be thoughtful of that. And this, this brief is one example of what we're looking at as we're planning and allocating for our, our school year moving forward. This information will, will be coupled with and matched up and themed with what Mr. Irvin gathers during his listening campaign. Next slide. So the, that, that brief really talks about five areas of what a school district can do to put equity at the center. And so I just want to highlight a couple of key phrases here. So it talks about making relationships the center of the work and prioritizing that. So a lot of work around social, emotional learning, of course, for our scholars, but also our staff and our families. And so our, our, our work is intentional around that, and we've, we've budgeted money there. We also want to be sure that we are addressing whole child needs. And so identifying those needs, that goes to the need for assessing our scholars when they come on campus and having ways to assessing, to assess them and do that early. So we don't want to move too fast before we know what children need, right? So making sure we've got strong systems around building relationships, assessing our students to make sure we meet all the various needs, strengthening the staff and partner relationships. So community engagement, family engagement. While we're making sure that teaching and learning is relevant and rigorous, you're going to see these themes run through some of the expenditures that we will speak to a little bit later in the presentation. And then the long term, really systemic piece is around building our teams at our school sites and at our district level to be collaborative in nature. That's what will then long term system, systemically transform our district. And, and so thinking about our schools in terms of clusters and how we build those and further develop the schools. That's the long term goal. This comes again from the research brief that comes out of PACE, the Policy Analysis for Californian Education. California School Board Association has been a part of this work. The, the, the association for access or association for California superintendents and administrators has been a part of that. And there's been multiple people just really talking about keeping equity at the center. So that's one piece of information that we're using to help shape where we're going for our school district. Next slide, please. In addition, we have, under the leadership of Ms. Applegate and Mr. Comnic, gathered tons of data from our families through the LCAP process. And so these are the themes that have teased, that the community has teased out and our, our staff has teased out from our schools around what they want to see in our LCAP. This information will also inform our work around how we're going to expend and use the funds that have come from the federal government. So you see that there's an academic achievement piece, there's community involvement and support and school climate. I want to emphasize, this is the data that, and the themes that came from our community LCAP input process. This does not also include the district goals. So there's some additional district goals that we will be adding as we move forward. And, and again, as Mr. Irvin gathers information through his listen and learn campaign. And so the next slide then shows how we're pulling this all together. And right now, it will be in our roadmap to opening. So we are just getting ready to start our, our task force. We have these four guiding principles. I shared these briefly with you probably about a month ago. They've shifted slightly, some of which was based off of what I just shared in terms of what we're learning from the research base, what our community is saying, and just some wordsmithing of language. So we have four guiding principles. First one is social, emotional learning, mental and physical wellness. And again, that's about everybody in the system. So our students, our families and our, and our staff. We want to make sure, and so in our roadmap, we will have equity access and inclusion. And you'll see that rolling through the roadmap. Again, you can hear how that connects back to the keeping equity at the center brief that we received or that we, I shared just a few slides before. High quality learning and academic achievement. So we heard that in, from that brief, but we also heard that from our families through the input gathered in LCAP. And then, of course, we have to make sure that our schools remain safe. Both the, the facilities are safe and that we're operating under the appropriate guidance at the given time. So these guiding principles will be in our roadmap. And we have taken, allocated the funds to further support the development of these and providing services for our students, our families and our staff. So with that, I'll turn it over to, back to Ms. Christakos, and she'll talk a bit, bit more about the funding.
Okay, Ms. Christakos, before you begin your one time funding process, a couple of things. Mr. Tillman, was your question prior? You want to ask something about the prior or you're still wanting to wait?
I went to the end.
Okay. And then there was a question in reference to the LCAP conversation from Ms. Rosales Medina. How did the district collect the LCAP priorities from parents? How did the district collect the LCAP priorities from parents? So can someone share that out before we move to the next section?
I'll start, and then Ms. Applegate, you further augment, because you, you know, you know it much more integral than I do. But we used Thought Exchange as the process to gather the information. It's a platform where families, they kind of rate each other's responses. So if someone puts something in the system, they ask, we ask a question, they put it in the system. And then if someone else really likes that, it's like, it's kind of like a Facebook, you heart it, or you, you like it, and then it, it starts to rise to the top. So that's one way where they gather the information. Ms. Applegate, go ahead and add more detail than what I just shared, because I know there's a lot more.
So Thought Exchange was one way, but Thought Exchange also has the capacity to send out surveys before the meeting. So parents have plenty of time to think about how they might want to contribute. As Dr. Menares mentioned, they have, they have the ability to be able to look at other responses and rate them before the live meeting. And we also had, at the live meeting, we had breakout rooms, where parents were allowed to be in breakout rooms and also give input. And we also had a link on our website where parents could go, see the current LCAP, read it, give some ideas. And I know that our site leaders as well have had meetings around some of the LCAP ideas and thoughts and, and some of these services and programs that our parents might want. So there were different opportunities, as well as our governance councils. So we also had presentations from Mr. Koenig's office at the DLAC, at some of the other Governance Council meetings as well.
Thank you for sharing that. And so with that, I guess the follow-up question would be, how were we able to get them all together? We, I know it was mentioned that they were looking at common topic points or so forth. Is there a way where we can look at that as well? Because I know in previous, our first time doing LCAP within the district, we received data at least showing us. I, I know that through the presentation you're telling us, but if there's a, you can share with us the documentation, just to give us an overview. This is what, how it was voted and so forth. That way we can see, at least for me personally, I would like to see that as well. But thank you for sharing that.
Yes, of course, and we can provide surveys and we can provide the Thought Exchange data as well.
Dr. Flores, we will, we will get that one, I think that'll be one on our parking lot at the end. So someone be prepared to answer that question from Dr. Flores. Unless they want to say yes or no now.
I would continue to move on with the presentation, maybe we can answer that then, because I'd be honest with you, I don't have the answer to that.
I think someone may. Okay, so we, we will now going back to Ms. Christakis, I believe it is.
Thank you. So again, this is just reiterates that first slide. On the left, where you see the arrow pointed to the left, are the funds that are fully expended or board-approved. So let me explain, the blue circles are federal funds. The, kind of the rust color are state funds. So everything to the left has been spent or board-approved. The Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant was board-approved at the last board meeting. You'll see that under the August thirty-first circle. And in the next couple of slides, we'll talk about that. Leveraged with the SR2 funds and the SR3 funds with the arrows pointed to the right, does that make sense? Those are the funds that will be coming to the board and proposed budgets over the next couple of years. Now, again, I want to reiterate, these are one-time and should not be spent on things that continue to cost money over time. It's really to provide an extraordinary support to the district over the next couple of years to help our students and staff following this pandemic. But it is not ongoing, so that's just really important to understand. And as you know, the state budget fluctuates greatly up and down, so we want to use these funds to really assist us over the next couple of years and be mindful that they're one-time. Next slide, please. So these are the broad categories that we talked about, where we have spent the, spending funding for current year and then have proposed in the multi-year projection. That's all a very broad, Superintendent Irvin talked about this, we're going to make sure that we have things allocated where we need it. But we wanted to get some placeholders in the budget. So the team is going to go through each line and give you some examples of what these expenditures look like. I'll turn it over to Dr. Rodriguez for line number one.
Great, thank you, Jeanne. So we know that social emotional learning is really the base and foundation to having classrooms where students can be, can thrive. And so some of these funds will be used for training our teachers in social emotional learning. We are also purchasing a new curriculum, because we do not have a curriculum for social emotional learning. And in addition, we will be looking at additional staff in the form of counselors and therapists in order to meet the needs of our students who are coming out of the pandemic. And so we're making a concerted effort to train our teachers over the summer and throughout the school year to make sure that all of our learning environments are conducive for learning in places where kids go to sleep and will thrive. Thank you.
Line number two. And so right now, we're looking at some expenditures and equity access and inclusion that include possibly some equity counselors or program specialists or some staff that can add additional support to our Edsa department. We're also looking at culturally relevant curriculum, professional development for teachers and other opportunities. We also have teacher, teacher leaders and teacher groups who are helping to include culturally relevant curriculum and embedding that into our curriculum guides. And so we have extra duty pay for teachers doing that work as well. And so I know that Dr. Greer has also a couple of contracts that he's looking at with some outside vendors for that, but I know that we'll be revamping as we start looking at the way we deliver our service. We'll be looking at the allocation and how we can spend that as well. And as far as the high-quality learning and academic achievement, we really are focusing on making sure that we have the assessment and curricular alignment, the system that we need to assess our students and make sure that we meet their needs. We also have curriculum that's specialized for tier-two interventions that we're looking at for our students. We're also really going to concentrate on our service delivery model, making sure that as we improve systems in Eds services, that we have a way to deliver those systems in an effect, an effective way. Because we know post-pandemic, we want all of our students to be able to have equitable experiences and very difficult to do from the central office to seventy-two schools. So we really are looking at the way that we do our service delivery within high-quality learning and academic achievement. We are also looking at continuing on with our intern programs to help students. We are looking at additional teachers in the form of our, our guest teachers to help with reading and with math, TK six. So that's going to be an additional support to every school. They will have an additional teacher for reading and mathematics to help students who have struggled during the pandemic. And just continuing to look at high-quality interventions and programs that can assist our students with the Expanded Learning Opportunities as well, we want to continue to invest in those for our students.
And then I'll take line four, I'm actually going to read something from the criteria on the spending is developing strategies and implementing public health protocols, including to the greatest extent practicable policies in line with guidance from the CDC for the reopening and operation of school facilities to maintain the health and safety of students, educators, and staff. So some of the examples that we have are, you know, we have some very, very antiquated old chiller systems that, that break down, and it's really difficult to ensure good air conditioning and good airflow. So we'll be replacing about eighteen of those, purchasing some new lunch tables so that we have opportunities for kids to have, you know, lunch outside and just being able to, to distance some of the students. And then just other ways to improve indoor air quality are some examples of the safe facilities and operations. And I would move to the next slide, I think we have a question on this slide.
Madam President, may I go?
That like froze me for a second, and yes, go ahead, Mr. Tillman.
So this is, I, I, I want to stop on this because it's critical. I'm, I'm assuming that the, the titles on the top where it says projected twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty twenty-three, twenty-four are when the monies have to be spent by?
These are, no, earlier we showed, and we can go back, Mr. Tillman, to show when they, maybe we just go back a couple of slides. Let's see this slide, see right here, there, that's when they have to be spent, twenty-three and twenty-four. And the AB eighty-six has to be spent in twenty-two. So if we can advance forward again, this is what we've just placed as placeholders in the multi-year projection. But just because we know we're getting the money and we want to ensure that we are spending the money on time. And that was one of your concerns at the last board meeting. But as Superintendent talked about, we can adjust these. We can move from one category to another without a problem.
Yes, my question, my fear is this, I see this as money that's limited. And I heard Ms. Rodriguez say they're going to hire counselors. So I don't, how do you, how, how, what's, how do you hire counselors? If this is one-time money and it's ongoing, and how many counselors are we talking about?
So in regards to that, this is one area in which there's lots of pots of money. And so as we're looking at social emotional learning as a whole, we were looking at how do we respond to the needs of some of our schools at the elementary level? Where some of your, our schools are running at seven hundred kids with one counselor. And so bringing in folks, whether it is just additional resources to provide that, you know, that bridge for this pandemic, because we don't know what to expect during this time. And so not necessarily looking at ongoing costs with, with this support, but we do know that we need to respond to the needs of students as they arise.
So let me be clear, the reason why, one of the reasons, one of the reasons for the special board meeting is just for this clarity. Th- these are one-time dollars. The last budget we had going is twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, we deficit spent by, I don't know, fifty million dollars, and the ending balance went, was down to fifty, was down to fifty million dollars. And I guess normally in the past, it'd been like a hundred million dollar. So I, and, and, and everyone's projecting that you're going to have lower enrollment. I, I know there's some money, if, if, if the governor and the legislature come to a medium, we'll get some extra money, maybe, in the local control funding formula, and I understand we get colder. A lot of times, that's taken up by just stepping column, and if you're going to have any kind of raise in the near future, that cost. So I don't, my, my fear is, and I, and I, I hope we all come to an agreement somewhere, that there's very little money for additional staff. So when, when, whenever I hear we're going to hire additional counselors, now Ms. Applegate said we're going to hire guest teachers. That's fine, because guest teachers aren't full-time employees. They get on a list, they get on a list, we have work, then they accept the work that we put out there. So it's very easy to manage that. But the worst case scenario is to hire another twenty or thirty, forty, fifty counselors. And then in three years, the money's gone, and those are full-time employees, and then we have to somehow give them notice that you, you can't work anymore because the money is not here. That never goes easy, so we shouldn't put ourselves in that predicament, because we don't have the ongoing cost. I don't even have a problem, we want to contract with companies to provide counseling services, but we can't hire full-time employees with this money, unless I'm missing something, and you guys can make it where I'm listening. But, you know, Mr. Tillman, I hear what you're saying on that. But remember, when you look at the local control funding formula, and let's think about the LCAP. The LCAP, you can adjust anyway, there's always cost saving. So even if we have to look at our LCAP, three years down the road, we can make those adjustments as necessary and build those positions in there. Here's the bottom line, coming out of outside, on the other side of this pandemic, we have to reshift our focus and provide services to kids and schools. We got to provide social emotional support on the other side of this pandemic. Therefore, I agree with you, these are one-time monies, and we can use these one-time monies for a lot of different supports. But within that LCAP, if we have to as a team look at and look at those unspent dollars, those unused dollars, those dollars that we're saving on a regular basis, we can hire the staff that we need. That's why we're going to shift slowly but surely to a service delivery model where we provide more services to kids. So again, I'm in need over the next six months to get as much information as possible, and there may be adjustments to those LCAPs, the LCAP, over the next three years, where we can embed those positions in there. So I would say you have to be patient on that, and I agree that in the long term, we'll talk about it at the next board meeting. Yeah, we are facing an instructional deficit, but there's going to be a plan and a way for us to address that in the future, and we already have a plan. But I'm going to need some additional time. So even if we hire additional staff and we need additional support, again, we always can make those adjustments within our LCAP if we need to on those action items. And secondly, when you say contract out, we got to be careful in contracting out, because we got to make sure if we're going to be contracting services out, there has to be a correlation between those services and student achievement and outcome. So I always want to be cautious when we say let's contract it out, because with seven thousand employees, we should be able to find the individuals within, we have to see if we have the capacity within the district first. So I hear you on that piece, we're going to be very strategic, we're going to be very thoughtful, we'll come back with a plan, but we do add positions. We're going to make sure that we're able to maintain that on the other side of twenty-three, twenty-four. I'm not sure if anybody else on the team want to jump in on that, but that's where we are with that.
I just wanted to add that as, as we continue to build capacity within our, our district, we're going to start limiting some of the outreaches to all the other companies that we've been using for professional development. There's a lot of money that's been going out, and we really need to build the capacity within our district. And so as we move toward a service delivery model, I anticipate we'll get better, we'll get better, and we won't need to contract out as much as we do now.
And, and I would never suggest that you use outside agencies for things that are not needed. When I said use, when I said use, maybe use outside agency, it was only in the context of if you have a need, rather than hiring a full-time employee, you might be able to find an outside contractor to fulfill that need, so not to hire employee. But, but this is going to be real clear, sometimes it's a, actually a panderance because of the length of time I've been on the board, because I already know what's going to happen. You're going to have all this money, it's going to seem great, like it's the, like it's Christmas for about three years. And then the bow's going to fall out, and we're going to have to deal with paying for these expenses with our regular POP ninety-eight and, and LCFF. As far as I'm concerned, LCAP means nothing to me, because there's no money associated with LCAP, none, zero. All the money that comes in is either POP ninety-eight or low control funding. And then we have this new money coming in for the FED, but I don't want to make the mistake on using the money that is, it says right in front of us that is going to end on these dates. And, and if Mr. Solis comes in and he says that he's willing to, to, to show on paper that we're going to have a positive certification with these additional employees and with the declining enrollment, which we know we have, then, then it's okay. But, but I think at some point in these, in these, in these lines that we have, there has to be a line that shows ongoing money. And, 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 and to be fair to you, uh, uh, Mr. Irvin, the, the problem happened before you got here. I got shocked with a budget that I wasn't expecting last, in the last fiscal year, and it scared me. So I'll be honest with you, so I had to have the confidence that when someone tells me that, it used to be in the past that when they told me any balance was going to be super low, that it always came back, came back higher than that. And I was willing to accept that, but when it really came back as low as they projected, that became real scary. So maybe Ms. Christakis can give Mr. Solis and show me that, hey, here's why it dipped, and here's why you guys did all this deficit spending this one time, but that was one-time money, and now you're positioning the way where you got this ongoing money, where you can hire another, whatever number of positions that you all want to hire, but someone has to show it to me. Yeah, and, and I want to, I want to get clarity there, I agree with you one hundred percent. The biggest concern I have, and I know Harold has the same concern, is you're right, on the other side, these are one-time dollars. On the other side of this, we have to be fiscally solvent. And our biggest concern is, yes, there, we are facing a structural deficit. And a lot of that, Dr. Mr. Tillman, has to do with the fact that there's, there's, you're losing enrollment, as we already know. We, that, that is, that is a given right now. So, but at the same time, we agree we have to put systems and structures in place. So what we're going to try to do, like Ms. Applegate said, is look at the current dollars that they're, they're, they're expending right, average on a yearly basis on the LCAP, just say hypothetically, whatever that amount is. We're going to look in there, we have to hire those additional counselors, just say hypothetically. Then we're going to find out, can we hire them, but also where can we cut back within that? Because we know we get those POP ninety-eight dollars, so can we cut back that place? Secondly, she's right about the contract, some of those contracts, and you're right, way before I got here, there is contracts that are in the millions of dollars, I mean total, there's millions of dollars that, in outside contractors. However, that's been ongoing for years. If there's a way where we can save money there, say like a counselor
If there's a way where we can save money there, say like a counselor costs you a hundred thousand a piece and we need ten, there's a million. We have to figure out a way on how do we find a million dollars without adding to our structural deficit. So if, but I'll be clear though, if we find that we cannot hire the additional personnel that we need, because we're going to put ourselves deeper in the hole, then we will not hire them. Does that make sense? We will not do that, because we got to be very strategic and thoughtful. So I'll ask Janie, I've asked Mr. Solins, Anna, Sandra, Marcus and the entire team, is where, if we need to hire additional positions, then where do we find those dollars in the current dollars that we're receiving? And secondly, I want to clarify on contracts. For example, we talked about student services mentors and we're going to need those on the ground, especially for attendance and mentoring and so on. Well, we can partner, I agree with you, we can partner with Cal State San Bernardino, because we can get those students through there, we can contract with them. And you're right, that saves us a lot of money, because in the end, we don't want to hire ten additional student services mentors and four years from now, we have to lay them off. Where we can contract, so we've already been in contact with them. So I, I'm in agreement with you on what happens after twenty-three, twenty-four. We're very cognizant of that fact, but be patient and give me some time to think it through. But I am in agreement with you that we are not going to hire if we don't have a plan on where we're going to save those dollars at. So this way, we're not laying off people. So just be patient on that. Anything, anybody else on our team want to clarify that with Mr. Tillman?
Okay, I think that's good. And in addition to that.
Sorry, that was Harold.
No, we're good on that. And Dr. Flores, you wanted some clarity as well?
Yes, I appreciate what you just said, Mr. Irvin. And also Danny for bringing up the issue of, of, you know, making sure that we don't use this one-time money for positions. So, and I like what you said, Mr. Irvin, in terms of clarifying that we would use our LCFF funding, right? We do need counselors. So we have to embed that in our, you know, in our LCFF, so that we can sustain those positions. So that, that is far sighted and, and that's what we have to do. So, so, you know, calculate that we can sustain, you know, the salaries, the benefits and so forth of whoever we, we hire. And it has to come from our base funding. And so, I, I mean, I, Mr. Tillman has been the longest on the, on the board and I've been the second longest. So, and we went through very hard times. I came onto the board when we were laying people off and we were in a recession. And those were hard times, I don't want to revisit that, I don't want us to go through that. That was very difficult. And so I think that's very clear and I'm glad that you confirmed that for Mr. Tillman and the rest of us. Also, I wanted clarity on the safe facilities and operations. There's zero funding there? Did we not get a hundred million dollars for facilities?
Dr. Flores, that's just out of these funding sources, the S R two and three for the current year. If you'll recall earlier in the presentation, we did a lot of stuff to prepare for return, right? So we did the Plexiglas and the PPE and all that out of S R one and some of the state funding.
Okay, so that is just S R, well, because you had S R up there, I thought that was part of there.
No, just S R two and three.
Three, okay.
Yes, yes, I should have put that up there, thank you.
So, so sixteen point seven million for twenty twenty-one is part of the ninety-two million?
It's part of the three hundred and three hundred and seventy-two million. So it's part of S R two, S R three and AB eighty-six, that's what this slide shows. So the ninety-one million that you're referring to, Dr. Flores, was what happened last year when we were closed, all the little pots of money that we received that's already spent. That was earlier in the presentation.
Twenty twenty?
Twenty, nineteen twenty and twenty twenty-one. And, you know, I realize this is very confusing, because normally we don't get all these different pots of money all at once, right? And so that, those were the things that we use to prepare our facilities over the last fourteen, fifteen months. That was on an earlier slide at the beginning.
However, however, so it's not correct, well, the summary of S R, is this S R two and three?
S R two, three and AB eighty-six. And so what you'll, you know, we propose to put in the budget for next year is the hundred and fifty point eight million. So this is a broad, like multi-year projection that you see those three years out. Because you know, we're, we're getting them, does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense, okay, thank you.
All right, and Ms. Rosales Medina?
I, I just wanted to briefly say that I do appreciate Mr. Irwin's comments regarding the counselors. And I understand the issues with ongoing. But the reality is our students need a support at the school site level. And so I just wanted to clarify with Ms. Rodriguez with regarding to the seven hundred, counselor per seven hundred students at the elementary level. Is, so do all elementary schools have one designated counselor? Just wanted to clarify with that.
Yeah, so there are, there is a counselor at each campus. But we know that at each campus there is fluctuating, there's different enrollment numbers. So we want to do is we want to be able to provide a better ratio so between counselor and students. And so we're looking at concentrating at the elementary school where there's, there seems to be more of a need.
All right, okay, good. And so I know we can, there has been a lot of overspending within the school district. So that's one thing I've noticed in the past several years that I've been on the board. And I, and once we really look at that, we will always have that extra money where we would be saving and then putting it to use at, at the counseling level, because our students do need that support. Especially after COVID, I just want to make sure that we really do understand that, you know, our students have been struggling for the, for decades at the school district level because of many, many issues. And so just saying that as a priority, I do appreciate the district looking at that, thank you.
Okay, thank you, there are no other comments at this time? So. So can we move to the next slide? And then I'd like to add a comment to what has just been said. So the superintendent has been very cautious about looking at what we're doing so that where we start to see a need, that we have something to offset that cost. And then what Mr. Tillman and Dr. Flores were saying, we still have to be careful, because Prop ninety-eight fluctuates so much. And right after the Great Recession, Prop ninety-eight is the funding for education was at forty-seven million, a billion dollars. And now it's at the highest point ever. So we, we can never put a hundred percent of our funding to staffing, because as soon as there's a fluctuation, then some of the things that Mr. Tillman were referring to occurs. And it's exacerbated by the declining enrollment. But the team is very, very aware of that. They know we have a structural deficit and putting a plan in place to address that, so that when we come out of the pandemic, we're also addressing the structural deficit and providing the best support for our students. So I just wanted to add that. So on the May revision, this is pending state adoption, you saw this last week. You can see all the different line items. Well, it begins to look like categoricals and generally there are strings attached, right? When the state gives you money, it's, but you have to do X, Y and Z. And some of these are proposed as one-time, some, some ongoing. But rarely is it enough money to cover the cost of what they expect you to do. So we're just going to have to be very cautious. What I've heard from the Assembly and Senate Budget Committees is that they're looking at some things a little different. They want to completely pay off the deferrals, and that's not on this chart, this was the May revise that we covered last week. They want to pay down some of the pension costs. So on the next slide, you'll see how that impacts us. Provide more special ed funding and a little bit more in the early education. And the governor already proposed quite a bit in the early education. But with that universal TK comes some other costs around preparing our facilities and all the things we need to do. So there's a lot of moving parts, a lot of one-time, some ongoing, and we just don't know the whole picture yet. So we want to make sure that we have the state budget adoption because of all these variables and then put a really, a, a plan together that's sustainable. On the next slide. I want to walk through the COLA. So this current year, we did not receive a COLA. You can see that under twenty twenty-one, LCFF funded COLA. And if you'll recall, a year ago, we were having a very different conversation around how the state budget looked, remember? We were looking at a huge deficit at the state level. We did give a two percent salary increase on line four, it was about nine point seven million. We, what we talk about servicing the salary schedule is ensuring that we cover step and column. Five point eight million. We did have a reprieve on the stirs and purrs a little bit this, this year. Health and welfare costs go up each year. And although we have a great committee that works really hard to keep those costs down, they do go up every year. State unemployment didn't go up this year, but total increases of fifteen point three million and we didn't receive a COLA. Now, we do have savings from the closure, but these are ongoing costs, except possibly the unemployment. In twenty-one, twenty-two, they're proposing to give us a COLA, so it's compounded, it's making up for last year and giving us a little extra, because unemployment costs are pretty high. The rate is going up. So earlier I showed you on the ongoing funding for COLA, about twenty-four million for our district. Again, you go down and there's step and column, stirs and purrs, line seven, health and welfare. An unemployment rate increase that will impact us by five million and a total increase of eighteen point eight million. So a little leftover from the COLA, but that doesn't account for other things that increase, right? Our transportation contract, special education, other costs, these are just the salary schedule. So when you move to the right, you see that cumulative total. So the COLA revenue, you know, the revenue we received from the COLA over the two years and then all the way down these costs, well, you see that it's short, it didn't cover the cost of both years. And so that's something that we have to be very careful of as we move forward, especially when we get to twenty-two, twenty-three. And we have to recognize the loss of ADA. We will have to operate on the actual ADA we receive next year. We won't have that where we get to use two thousand nineteen, twenty levels prior to the pandemic. So I just wanted to illustrate that to ensure that that is, is, is clear, that the COLA doesn't. It depends on the amount of the COLA, right? If each year we got five point oh seven percent, we would be better off. I just saw a question from Dr. Flores. We did have one-time savings this year, we did not save thirty million from transportation, we saved about ten million. But those are one-time savings, right? And it's the ongoing costs. And so I just wanted to share the impact to COLA. And then on the final slide, Dr. Menares covered this earlier. Again, we were in wait for that state adoption and review the, the dollars and our priorities. We'll be prepared to make amendments in the forty-five day budget, but we can make amendments all the time. If we need to make it more often, we, we can and we will. In October, we'll bring academic achievement updates. And then so, several board members mentioned, we don't want to give a penny back. We need to make sure that we spend all of these one-time dollars. And so we'll accompany that achievement report with a expenditure report. And we'll incorporate that in all of the interims. So in the first and second interim, you'll get updates related to these one-time dollars. And again, incorporating the superintendent's entry plan, listening and learning tour. And that wraps us up, next slide for this evening. I think I had another question, I didn't. Or page, yeah, page twelve. I'm sorry, I was saying that all on mute. No worries. Page twelve, Ms. Rosales Medina has that question. Yes, and, and my, my question is regarding a number, let me make sure I'm reading it right. It's number three, comprehensive after-school, is this for the CAPS program? Yeah, so under the, it's part of it, providing before and after-school support. So that was part of the governor's proposal, so you can see these are all in billions. We're not sure what that will mean to us. In the May revise, it talked about it would grow each, you know, over five years. We believe that the, the Senate and the Assembly Bill will also incorporate that. So I didn't go into a lot of detail this board meeting on each of these items, because it's going to change. And it, we're going to know something in the next couple of weeks. So this is what the governor proposed that we went over last time. But yes, Ms. Medina, there, we're, the state is aware that our students are going to need a lot of support coming out of the pandemic. And we want to ensure all sorts of supports before school, during school, after school. And so I'm sure with the one-time dollars that the state has, that they didn't expect that they're going to provide some of these more funding to us.
All right, thank you for that. And I do want to make a suggestion with regarding the CAPS funding. So the, before I was a board member, there was issues with the CAPS program at, at certain schools, not, not across the board. It was regarding, it was being more used as a babysitting versus trying to do enrichment programs. I, I've seen this back when I was involved, like I said before, I was a school board member. I'm looking at it now, I've heard a few concerns just recently with regards to CAPS. I'm, I'm wondering if we're able to create a task or something to really reevaluate how we're doing the after-school, before and after-school programs, to make sure that we're, it's great money, it's great purpose. But we want to make sure that the enrichment happens across the board to all school sites. And the way it should be done, I know some great sites that are doing it, you know, creating great programs and so forth, but there's other sites that may need that extra support. I would like to make sure that as we're spending more money into these programs, that we're evaluating and showing the outcomes based and so forth. So if there's a way we can do a task force or just really creating a strategic plan for it, I'd like to do that, thank you.
So in response to that, Mrs. Rosales Medina, we are looking at our CAPS programs to make sure, because at this time, you're right, they are not at every campus for various reasons. And so some of them, because there's different funding sources and different timeframes in which different schools got funded. And so we are looking at all of our contracts with CAPS to see if we're getting, you know, the best value for those programs. We are also working with Ed Services to make sure that we are extending learning opportunities for students. As we learn more about how do we make our schools more attractive, we're looking at how do we embed STEAM in our after-school programs so that every single campus in our district has STEAM programs to augment the day programs for our schools. So absolutely, we're looking at that. As you well know, Dennis Mormon is retiring. And so as we get in a new director and, and really restructuring and reimagining and being innovative, we do see great things coming out of CAPS.
Right, great, perfect, thank you so much for doing that.
And Ms. Medina, I wanted to add to that, as I was talking to the team. And I think that you brought up something that's very critical for us. And it, it also impacts our enrollment. So one of the things we have been talking about is, we want to make sure, again, as you know, that every school has to be a good school. So we want to make sure every school has an after-school program, but after-school STEAM program. So we want to make sure every school in the district as we move forward. And again, be patient, because I need time to do my listening, learning tour. But the goal is every school to be a STEAM academy, every school throughout the entire district. That will not only require, that will not only attract more students, but what it's going to do is, you know, obviously impact their enrollment, there's going to be more students wanting to be in our schools at every school. It's a STEAM academy and that starts with the after-school program at every school throughout the entire district. So I, I would like every school to be a STEAM academy, that's going to be the plan that we're going to be focusing on. And then we're going to review our entire after-school program. I've already tasked Ms. Dr. Rodriguez and the rest of the team to start looking at that, reviewing all those contracts, so we can have a robust program. And then at some point, some of those programs can be embedded during the day. And so that'll be part of our overall plan, is to revamp, to revise, to revisit. But the goal is every school will have a STEAM academy going in the future. But again, it's going to take some time. But again, be patient with that. But we shouldn't have one school with a solid program, then another school around the corner. But we shouldn't have one school with a solid program, then another school around the corner that does not. That's not equity and that's not fair. So we're going to make sure, so I, I do hope that the board supports us in these efforts when we do that, because that obviously will create people to be upset and have issues and concerns with that. But we will go to a model to where every school will have a, a strong after school, solid STEAM related program.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Tillman.
So a few things, can we back up to the slide with the, with the big numbers on it? This one. So just so I'm clear, if, if we don't spend the $102 million by 2023, do we lose it?
That's my understanding, Mr. Tillman. That's the spend date that has to be adhered to.
And then just in a technical perspective, do they give us some money on the front end? Or do we have to spend the money and then bill it back?
So that's a great question. We got, just got notified, I'm looking for it. I think we're getting 25% of S R two next month. And S R three, 25%, I believe in September, and I can get you the exact information. Then they start to reimburse is my understanding. But I, I will get clarification from both Ms. King and Mr. Koenig on that.
And just, and just for clarification, do the two different named category of money have different restrictions?
So they generally have the same restrictions. And we can send you the link to CDE that shows you each cat, like so care, S R two can be spent on the same things as S R one plus some items. S R three can be spent on the same things as S R one and two plus some items. And so we can get that to you and the link to you.
And then, so I, I think at some point, I know it takes time, so you know, I'm impatient, that's just my nature. But if at some point we could get those, those, what the qualifications are for spending the money. And then if we know that date, then I'm assuming that Mr. Irving is going to lead the charge to inform staff and then make sure we find ways to spend it in a way that's going to benefit the district. And if it truly is possible, you can lose the money, then that needs to be. I mean, that, that's important, right? So we need to make sure we have a plan to expend the money that we're going to get for sure and make sure money doesn't go back. Because I can't imagine our district not having the need to spend this money. But I do know that it's tough to spend money because one is communicating it to the right people and then getting the feedback. And that's why I think it's great that Mr. Irving will have this listening thing, but also make sure we involve everyone. But then if we can have those timelines, so we don't miss those dates in terms of being able to expand as much, as much of that money as possible, if not all of it, okay?
Mr. Tillman, I think Mr. Solen just put the link in the chat. But a lot of it is just the things exactly that the team has put together. Learning laws, mental health support, summer school, before and after school, some needs on the facilities. So those are all the, the, the items that, and areas that these fundings can be spent on. And the link, and, and the link was just put in the chat.
Perfect. And I, I, I heard with Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina said about, you know, wanting to have these enhanced. And I heard Mr. Urban talking about this theme after school programs. But I hope we don't lose sight of where we're at today. And, and this could be a win-win for parents. You know, I hope we're not going to have these big plans, but then have waiting lists for the existing CAPS program. If you have the funding already, unless you can't find the staffing or the organizations to host the CAPS program, then there shouldn't be a waiting list for CAPS at the existing CAPS program. So I hope somebody's dealing with that practical piece of it. Because I don't want to get the call saying, hey, I can't get my child in a CAPS because they're on a waiting list. Unless I'm missing something, is the funding not there to ensure we don't have waiting lists?
Well, so go ahead.
In response to that, some schools, as I mentioned earlier, have different funding sources. Dennis Mormon has been working on making sure that there is parity so that we do not have waiting lists. And so this, this past LCAP season, we were working on that. So we anticipate not having those waiting lists for the next school year. We know that's our problem.
Right, because the, the key is when you have the money, somehow it has to be communicated to the right people that they have the money. You, you'll actually have people who don't know they, they have the money to spend. And then everyone loses out on that, right? And then can we go back to the slide? Where, Ms., because, well, first let me say, you know, in all this, you guys have a lot of terminology that doesn't mean anything to me from a practical perspective, whether you say equity or emotional, whatever. I don't know what you're talking about doing there, right? I don't know about the, if you're talking, if you're talking about providing more counseling or, or, or what type of help, what classes for kids or exactly what it is. But I, I will say this, I think with this money, some of the big problems we have should be addressed, if only to prove that the problem can be solved with additional money. Because if we can, for instance, reduce our chronic absentee rate for certain groups, that I think is just terrible. And we always talk about not having enough resources. Then I think this is, this is the time we should work on reducing those numbers. Even if it means using a lot of this money, just so we can prove if you have the money, you can reduce chronic absentee rate. And that's going to benefit students. It's just sad to me to see thousands and thousands of kids with more than 18, 18 or more absences in the district. And then we say, we haven't talked to those families. That's a tragedy. One of the things that impressed me about Mr. Irwin is the district he came from, he talked about a program he had where they use social workers combined with student services folks to know the students and the family and provide, provide them with the information and help where they were at, at any given time. That's what's going to make the difference in our district. And we can do that with one-time money. So I hope that's part of the plan.
It is, and you know, we've been talking a lot with Mr. Irwin around how do we have a more comprehensive approach to addressing it? And we, these funds that are coming to the district are, are windfall. But if we can't make a difference with this money, you know, we got a problem. And so we're all, it's all hands on deck. You know, we have the resources. Now it's making sure that we have systems and structures that we have accountability built in so that we can meet the needs of kids. The SEL, as we're talking through it, is, it's not just, you know, it's, it's being, having teachers informed on how to deal with students who have, are coming from traumatic backgrounds. How do we help students understand that life at, at this particular moment is temporary? And you can overcome any obstacle that comes your way and building in assignments and group work where they learn perseverance and grit. And so all of those things are, that's what SEL, that's part of SEL. But it, it takes a different, very deliberate approach with our teachers. Because many of them are doing it, but we want to make sure that we're taking it to scale. In addition to what you had mentioned around the social workers, that is something that we're looking at within the service delivery model, where we are deploying folks instantaneously. So once we run reports to find out who is not at school, we're deploying teams of people out in the community at that particular moment to find out what's going on. And even though there may be challenges with families because they don't have jobs or health concerns, being able to have a resource that will deploy at that moment to, you know, remove barriers and excuses because we need kids at school. If they're not in school, how are they going to learn? How are they going to take advantage of all these opportunities that we have if they're not coming to school? So those are things that, that we are planning for. Rome wasn't built in a day and we're committed to making sure that, you know, it's, it's happening. And Mr. Irwin has been very clear in the direction and has been very inspirational in, in trying to build those systems and really pushing us to look at things any more deliberate in looking at efficiency. So those are things definitely that we're working on.
Great, I agree with you a hundred percent. I would say rather than excuses, a lot of times there are actual reasons why people are having problems too.
Mr. Tillman, can I add real quickly? Because I, because you hit it, you're hitting it head on and I like that. I just want to be very clear, very quickly, that when we talk about the service delivery model, when you talk about the, the people on the ground, we've already been building behind the scenes that service delivery model that will come to the board and present. Soon as I have a chance to meet with the board president and the board vice president in the future. It's going to be sooner than later, but be patient because one of the things we've talked about, like you said, that youth services specialist, that's where I talked about the, the partnership with Cal State San Bernardino. If, once we get those youth services specialists on the ground, there'll be one or two, one in each elementary, middle school feeder pattern in clusters. Those individuals will be trained to do check and connect. Those students, those individuals will be on the ground, working with a caseload of 20 to 30 students who are assigned. Then we're going to have student services mentors. They will have a cluster of schools, they'll be on the ground. Then you'll have your social workers, one every two to three schools. Remember, we don't have to hire all these additional people. This is going to be built into the service delivery model because the staff is already within the district. I just need time to go on the listening, learning tour. And meanwhile, simultaneously, we will build out the service delivery model. So they'll be on the ground, but we have to remember, we have to have the right people in the right place to make this work, because we can't just get, put people in systems that don't want to be in these systems. So we're going to pull it off. You just got to be patient on that. I need six months, well, you know, six months, but simultaneously we'll be building that service delivery model. But I will tell you August 2nd, we have to have a team on the ground to deal with attendance, chronic absenteeism, social emotional learning. But at the same time, we have to deal with college and career readiness, A through G requirements, and then STEAM. So all that happens in the service delivery model. I just need the board to be patient. And when we share it with you, the most important thing on this whole budget, you have to remember, once the board identifies those five or six goals, the board has to support us and ensure that we are aligning those dollars to those goals. Because what we don't want to do is be having, everybody got all these different goals out there. But I want to focus on, if the board says social emotional learning, our support and services goes to that. If they say college and career readiness and embedded in there is dual enrollment in A through G, we focus there. Just long as we stay focused, because what's going to happen when you go on this tour of, of closing this gap and making, providing support for students is, is that sometimes people don't like that because it impacts them. And I'm going to need the board to continue to stay strong and with us the entire way, because the board is at a great place. And so just be patient on it. We will get that to you in the next two to three weeks, what the model looks like. And then you can tear it apart and we'll keep building it until we get the board's blessing on it. And, and we'll make it work, but be patient with us.
And let me end with, thank you for that. Let me end with the last slide. Can you turn, I hate to end on a sad note, but can you turn to the slide, Ms. Kristakis, where you showed the, there you go, that one. So this is the reality about ongoing money. And this is where we're at. So right now, Ms. Kristakis is, is saying that for the 2021, 22 budget year, unless I'm missing something, that we have a, we're going to have the deficit spent by 9.9 million dollars now of ongoing money. Now, it may not be a big deal this time because you have this one-time money. But my point is, there, there are dates, you already shown the dates when the one-time money ends. So my point is, for every position that you add, you're going to increase this number unless Mr. Irving is able to do it. He, he's suggesting, and I will say, we did have ongoing money designated for LCAP expenditures that were one-time expenditures. So you're right, if you had some contracts in there or some professional services stuff in there, there was some money in there that was ongoing. But you got to show that, and Mrs. Sullivan showed on paper, and then he had to show where this number is going away before we start adding positions, unless I'm missing something. Someone could say, hey, you don't know what you're talking about. You're going to, you could add 30 counselors and 20 nurses and this red number would not go up if we didn't do anything different. Am I right or wrong about that, Ms. Kristakis?
So Mr. Tillman, you are correct. What we want to know though is how does our enrollment look, right? And that is, that's a huge indicator. So right now, we're, we've been declining and of course we declined quite a bit this year. And I know Dr. Rodriguez and her team really not only want to get all those kids back, she also wants to improve the attendance rate. All those things will help. So yes, Mr. Tillman, we have to be able to sustain it over time.
And, and can I make one thing clear? Because it was a good thing, but it could turn out to be a bad thing. And that was they funded us at the previous year's ADA for the last two years.
Correct.
And even that's going to go away. So you could have a huge hit. And when does that go away? What school year?
22, 23. And so you'll see next week in the multi-year projection where, you know, we have to use some of these S R funds to help with the budget deficit over the next couple of years. We just have to. And so you'll see that, we'll, we'll share that with you, which allows the district time to respond, right? We're going to know in October what the enrollment is. And so with your first interim report, we'll be able to say this is what it is. Right now, we're assuming of the 2,100 students that did not show up this year, that 1,000 of them will be coming back. So you're right.
And let me make it, let me make it very clear what the word respond means. Respond normally means that you would accommodate the loss in revenue through attrition. Meaning that you would have people that were retiring and leaving and you wouldn't fill those positions. So I'm confused when I hear people say, we have this. You may realize that because of lower ADA, you have even less money than what this is showing. But at the same time, we're going to hire a bunch of new people. It doesn't make any sense.
Well, Mr. Tillman, so you got a couple of things going on there. So I hear you, but you got a couple of things going on there. And, and, and you're right, and so is, is, is Janie. Both of you are correct, but here's your issue as an outsider. You have an enrollment issue. So you got a couple of issues there. One, you have the enrollment issue. You're right, you lost 2,200, but you're averaging Janie about 1,000 a year. So we have to find a way to stop the structural deficit. Yes, you can use those S R dollars and Janie's right, over three years, you could probably get rid of that deficit by the end of 23, 24, Janie. Correct me if I'm wrong, if you use some of those S R dollars, that will, but even if you do that, I, I, like I talked to Janie about, even if you do that, you've still got a structural deficit ongoing because you're still losing enrollment. So therefore, we have to put the teams on the ground in the service delivery model, one to increase enrollment, get those three and four-year-olds right away, get back the, make sure we get back those students who we lost in enrollment. Because again, the T, and then remember the additional dollars in that trailer bill, which we haven't talked about yet for TK expansion and pre-K. If we can increase our enrollment and reduce that thousand, thousand students per year, then at the same time, we have to have STEAM academies. We got to find a way to attract and retain more students to stay in the district. And the third issue that you have, that we have to really look at as a, as an organization, is we have 5,500 students or more, more or less in charters, that's about 70 million dollars. So then, then that, that itself would, would, if those students came back to the district, that would wipe out your deficit, right? But so ongoing though, you got to remember, ongoing, you're right, Mr. Tillman, at the end of the three years, even if you use the S R dollars to reduce your deficit, you still got enrollment decrease. So I have to find a way, we, I'm going to say we, because all of us together, we have to find a way to increase enrollment and attract and retain students and make all of our schools the best schools in the county. So this way, no student wants to leave our system. So we got to stop the, the, the students from, you know, leaving the district. Because right now, 1,000 a year, three years from now, if it continues, you're going to be at 3, 4,000. You do the times 13,100, that's a whole nother number that we're not even anticipating. Because we're anticipating next year to stop the thousand dollars, you know, the, the lack of.
Well, Mr. Irving, this, the, the, just sometimes declining enrollment is a trend across the state.
Correct.
So, so if, if it happens to be a trend across the state, there's virtually nothing you can do to go and change that trend now.
Absolutely.
So it's a reality that we got to deal with and may, and it may be a reality that we cannot affect. We can, we can, if it's, if, if the momentum is going in that direction. I agree, there's always things you can do to get more students back to school. That's what I'm talking about, even in terms of the chronic absenteeism. A lot of those students end up dropping altogether. So you're right, there are ways we can bring kids back to school and that's a win-win for everybody. Because we're helping students and, and we, we end up getting more funding for those students. So I love that. But I, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that. But I I don't want to lose sight of the fact that you, you know, we, when we go to CSBA, you'll hear. That there's declining enrollment and, you know, eighty percent of the districts, only twenty percent have increased enrollment. I I came on board when we had increased enrollment, but that was going across the whole spectrum. So I don't know where it's going to be at, but you know, the last report I read worldwide, the big phenomenon is not having enough people. There's the birth rate across the world is going down, right? I'm not saying that's impacting us locally, but there is a possibility that. Uh, we may not be able to, we may have to deal with having a decline in enrollment for a while. And and we can do it as long as we're realistic about it. The only way I get in trouble with this, if I don't address it now. To me, this is the very best time to address this issue, because we have the funding and we have the time. The only way you lose on this issue is when you don't address it early. If you're talking about it two years from now, it's too late. So as as bad as it sounds right now, it'd be ten times worse if we add a bunch of employees. And then we wake up and realize we don't have the funding to pay for the employees, because we, even Dr. Flores said we did layoffs. This district has never really laid off people. Because we manage it through attrition. The worst we've done is a whole bunch of notices, so I just want to make sure that that's where I want to keep it, I don't want to have to lay off a whole bunch of people.
All right, let me let's, let's, the patiently waiting other board members, Dr. Hill and then Mr. Tillman, if I need to come back to you, I will. So Dr. Hill.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers. I I first want to say to Mr. Irvin, welcome aboard, we're glad to have you here, and Mrs. Sullen, thank you. Uh, uh, we look forward to working with you as well. And the one thing, well, a couple of things, um, I want to thank Karen for sending out. The budget workshop information, and maybe we should get it a little sooner, so some of these questions. Can be answered before you do your presentation on the eighth, that might help and cut down on some of the conversation. But the other thing, I'm just so proud that we are, our three hours have changed. You know, from what we have known since the early days of school, and I think that's good, I know a lot of people say we want to go back to normal, I don't know why. Because with the number of kids we had missing school, getting Ds and Fs, who wants to go back to that? The kids don't, so I'm glad we're going to focus on the kids. Um, uh, in in the beginning, and I just want to say to Jane, and thank you for the presentation. And you know, again, it it might be helpful. Uh, if we could get it, you know, so everybody will have a chance to look at it and maybe can can answer some of those. Uh, questions at that time, because there's people asking questions, I knew some things were embedded there. So thank you, thank, thanks to all, and again, a good presentation.
All right, thank you, Dr. Flores.
Thank you, Madam President, um, I I wanted to just ask, uh. Mr. Irvin and Janie, can we, um. Get how much money we saved this year and how much is going to roll over? Uh, how much we saved in vacancies in terms of salaries, benefits and so forth. Uh, and to address the deficit, because that last slide only dealt with salaries.
Correct, so we, you're right, Dr. Flores, we do have savings, but that's one time savings. And so we're going to do the estimated actuals, that's where, you know, Ms. King and her team look at where we are right now. And we project where we're going to end the year, you're going to get that, a glimpse of that next week.
Okay, good.
Then the final savings will come to you in September, so we will have that one time savings. That helps with what you saw, but that servicing of the salary schedule is ongoing. And so the other savings that we experienced this year, obviously a lot of that was one time because of the closure.
Right, right, because I think we had savings in utilities, uh, we had savings in transportation. And in a lot of other areas, uh, where we didn't have expenditures and vacancies, not filling. Um, positions and so forth, so I I would appreciate that, thank you.
All right, and Ms. Sabios. Uh, Ms. Sabios, it sounds like your. Your volume might be off a little, but go ahead and I'll let you know. Yeah, you're real staticky and we can't hear you. Okay. You're gonna try it now off camera?
You sound like a chipmunk.
Yeah, we can't. Go completely away? Where is she?
Can you hear me?
Yes, just get a little loud, it's clear, so can you do it louder or closer?
Um.
Okay. We can hear you better.
A little bit?
Yeah, there you go.
Um, well, good evening, um. I don't want to take too much time, Mr. Tillman, you made me forget all my questions already. Kidding. Um, but I did have a few, this is really good conversation actually, and I really enjoy the back and forth because. Um, there's a lot of, you know, information that that obviously I'm new to, and so hearing different perspectives really, really helps me out. I just want to make sure that on the. On the, it was page eleven of the of the slides. That we are able to, so I know you went down, you know, for number one, you talked about training teachers, purchasing curriculum, adding staff to provide support in E, SEL. And then you went to number two and number three and number four. Um, you mentioned curriculum, um, for almost. All of them with the exception of number four, and I just want to, is there ever overlap in 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 purchasing curriculum? Um, so are you purchasing different curriculums for each one of these categories, or is there like one time purchase? That you can then use, you know, on one, two and three, does that make sense?
So Ms. Sabios, sometimes, as you know, we have a base program which we consider our tier one instruction. That all of our students are involved in, but many times, and and I'm sure on the other side of this pandemic, we see additional needs. For instance, an example would be an English learner, so English learners, of course, have everything that's in tier one for instruction. But then they need above and beyond, so they may need language programs, they may need something to help them understand concepts better. Um, we, within our African American student support, we have other programs that may be more engaging. So at times, these are supplemental programs to supplement our base program, so there are different needs. Um, different grade levels, some students are not at grade level, they may need something to help push them up a little more. So all of these are basically supplemental programs, because we have a strong tier one instruction, but some students just need more or different type of support. Or it's multimodal or some, something different, a different way that they learn.
Okay, and the reason why. In addition to that, um, Ms. Sabios, so like the SEL has different levels, so we have one for elementary, middle and high. There's also one for adults, and then as we're also looking at curriculum, we're looking at even supplemental curriculum around digital. Um, supports as well, so it's not just the the actual textbook. But also a new curriculum that we're going to be using for the virtual academy.
Okay, perfect, thank you, the reason why I ask is because, well, I don't know how much money is usually spent on curriculum, and I just wanted to make sure if this was. You know, something that was shared across, like purchased one or two different types of curriculums, and then, you know, it was shared across these three sections. But it sounds like it's, there's multiples that you need to buy, so just as a reminder, if you can please itemize. Um, you know, those things on here, so that there, if there is overlap, that we can see where the overlap is. And if there isn't, we can see where it was spent, right? Um, so so moving forward with these, with these, um, S, with the ESR and the AB eighty six, that's what I would like to see under each of these categories. And then also going back to the funding that has already been spent. Also, I would like to see, um, you know, an overview. Itemized kind of, kind of, um. Summary of where the money was spent, how it was spent, and then outcomes associated to that, right? So I'm always going to be asking for outcomes, how are they linked, you know, did we spend it, how did we spend it, and what was the outcome? What did it do for our students, if it was spent around our students? So that takes me back a little bit to the, to the. To the, um, Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant that was just approved this past August, right? Um, I was just looking at the, at the, at the plan again, um, and I had it up. At the, at the plan that was submitted, the, uh, the, the Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant Plan that was submitted last meeting. Um, and I just want to make sure that we are going to be getting some form of additional update to this in terms of the monitoring aspect of it. What is the outcomes that we want to see, right? And how, when, when we come back and I look at this again, at this ELOP grant plan. I want to make sure that the money that was used was tied to whatever. Goal and that, and and that we were able to see the outcome, right? Did we achieve the goal that we wanted to achieve through this? And and looking through it, I didn't really see, um, anything stating. So so for instance, and I know you guys don't have it, it because you have it, but maybe not up, but on page twelve, it's talking about the expedited expenditure plan, right? And you have the the amounts, so extended instructional learning time, you have, for instance, twenty four thousand. I'm sorry, twenty four, um, twenty four million, and so. Then you also have a category that says actual expenditures. And it says will be provided when available, so I just wanted to make sure that we are being provided. Exactly what it was spent on. Um, as we're going, because I want to always ask, are we getting to the goal that we want to get to? And if not, why not?
Okay, Ms. Sabios, let me jump in there for a moment, I I hear where you're going with that now. So on each and every action item and each and every, the 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 you're, that's a massive amount of 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 work. And that the staff would have to put into that, that doesn't happen overnight. So what has to happen first is, we have to be able to identify clearly what the goals are, the board have to determine what are the three major goals. Once they determine what those three major goals is, our job as a district determine, here, okay, here's the priorities. And on each of those priorities, there's strategies and we'll, and then we'll lay out what are those, 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 those indicators of success, what are the outcomes? We'll lay those out, but again, that doesn't happen ongoing, that's typically the board selects a certain time during the year when they want to see those reports. It could happen, um, at the end of the first semester, it can end, it happened at the end of every quarter, so. But if you're asking for it ongoing, um, we're going to have to get clarity on that, because ongoing, there's about. Thirty, forty, fifty, there's hundreds, there could be, there could be hundreds of action items, so we're going to have to get clarity, what I would. And and I'll have the team jump in there, but we got to get clarity around that, because, for example, we gave you all that based on everything that the district has done previously. You would get twenty thousand, you would get about twenty binders full of information, so it's got to be very clear, typically you have an overarching goal. The board has already said that one of the goals for going forward is, I don't know, school climate and culture. Well, there we can write a goal, we can talk about what's the outcomes that we want to see with that. And then we'll tell you, okay, here are going to be the three major priorities, you, the district has already indicated they want social emotional learning. We're going to have to be very clear, and what is that, what are the outcomes that we want to expect? The second one was a safe, clean, um, and secure environment, okay? Then we have to talk about what was the outcome, what is the board expecting to see, and the third one is a positive learning environment. So we just got to be very clear on what those expectations are, because remember, under each of those priorities. Our programs, initiatives or strategies. So if we did outcomes on, we usually do an outcome on the overarching goal, and if we did it on every single action item. Um, that could take, that that would be a massive amount of work now, now can we do it? Absolutely, but I would recommend going forward that we wait, give me some time to do the listening, learning tour. Identify what those goals are going forward, because again, the board evaluates me off those goals. And then I could talk with the team and we can come back based on those goals that that are currently the LCAP goals, we could probably give the board an update. And Dr. Rogers, I'm not sure when you do those, but those three goals that you currently selected for the LCAP, we could probably do that around October, November. It's typically around the time when we present to the board, uh, an update on where our progress report. Dr. Menares, can you help me with that, because I'm not sure how you do it here in the district, but. I hear what doctor, I hear what Dr. Sabios is asking for, if it's a specific program or initiative, yes. But I need clarity if you're talking all action items or some of those.
Yeah, and if I can jump in very quickly, Ms. Sabios, I know that for AB eighty six, you're, you're specifically talking about the Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant. As Janie had mentioned earlier, there is an academic achievement part that we will have to report based on those funds that were allocated to us. So you will be getting that, because that is part of the grant. So, um, Ms. Christakis mentioned that there is a time in the month, and I don't remember Ms. Christakis which month. But specifically for AB eighty six, the Extended Learning Grant that you were asking about, we will have an academic report that needs to go with that grant. To show exactly the outcomes of that funding.
Yes, and and so I would add to that, um, to your response, Mr. Irvin. We, um, we have not had yet a very, uh, a, a regular update to the board on LCAP in the past. However, the plan of moving forward is to have that, um, and. And we were planning on doing that with the, um, the, in in October, to Ms. Applegate's point, that in the timeline of what we shared. That we would do an expenditure update as well as the, the outcomes at that point. And we will have had data from summer program as well as then, um, data for. From our students from the entry into school, right, our, our, our pre-assessment, so we'll have some data sets that we'll be able to share with you, Ms. Sabios and the board. Um, and then the only other piece I would add is, um. And and so to to kind of put an exclamation point on what Mr. Irvin was saying, we want the, the goal should be broad enough. That we can, um. It it takes many different actions combined together to move, um, these, the outcomes that we want for students. So one individual action is typically doesn't work for every child. And so, um, you wouldn't want us to be giving you the individual actions, um, because you wouldn't get the picture that you're looking for. You want to see overall, for instance, our students is, is the early literacy growing, how quickly are students capturing any, um. Accelerating their their ability and their early literacy, we would be doing many. Um, steps and actions to get all students there, for some students, a set of actions will work. For another set of students, they're going to need that and more, right? So, um, that's one of the reasons why you want it to be in a broader sense, as Mr. Irvin is is speaking about. Um, because it takes so many different steps in order to get students there and or strategies based off the learning style of the student.
Thank you, and 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 I do understand that, I guess, um, I guess I'm, you know, kind of jumping the gun and I'm very eager. I guess, if you will, to start seeing some of this move forward, as I'm sure all of you are. Um, because it's just been, it's been, it's just been so long in my experience, you know, and I feel like we, we. I feel, and I felt for so long that we. Make plans, but somehow they fall through the cracks, right? And then, and then we get to the end of, like Mr. Danny was, Mr. Tillman was saying, we get to the end where we're talking about it two years, you know, later. And and we didn't think ahead or we didn't anticipate, so that's part of the reason why I'm saying, okay, what specifically are we going to be doing or looking at? Um, and I want to make sure that we are clear on that, so as a board, we do need to come together. And I I don't have clarity on what some of those are currently, so I guess my question would be like. We're going to be meeting, um, Mr. Irvin. Uh, sometime in July to come together and and bring those, you know, those goals clarified.
We're gonna, we're gonna have a board retreat, but yeah, so, so that'll be, so here's what we'll do. Definitely, since the district has already selected the goals, they have the three LCAP goals, the ones that Dr. Menares talked about today. Let me go back with the team to look at those three goals, to identify. What are those, those major priorities are, and then talk to them about what were those outcomes that they want to, they they expected, because that's the conversation that we we're already having. And then find out a time to when we can come back to the board to talk about what those goals are, what those key priorities are, and then what outcomes would we expect? What are, what are going to be, and we got to create some key performance indicators, but so give us some time on that, let me, give me, if only, I'm only day two. But I'll get there for you, trust me, gi- give me some time, because I I'm with you, I'm always eager. However, we got to be strategic and thoughtful, and and we, we want to move with a sense of urgency, but we also want to be strategic and move with patience. Because if we move too fast, then it could create some issues, so I'll get back with you and the board on that. Secondly, yes, I will get to the board at the end of my superintendent, um, Listening Learning Tour around probably November, but before that. probably November, but before that, we'll definitely have a high level update to the board around these current goals that they have already selected. So let me, let me do some, let me work on that. This is day two. I'll add that to my, my, uh, agenda with the board to discuss that. I, I just need some patience on that. That's all I'm asking. And then I'll get you what you're asking for.
Okay, and, and the reason again why I'm asking all of these questions is because then I can come back and tie it to the money, right? I don't know yet what, what it is and so how to discuss financially. So to me, this right now means really nothing. Have concretes in, in a lot of, in, in, in a lot of the questions that I'm asking. And, and I know that you're asking, you know, for, for patience and you're just coming in and, and I get all of that. Um, I just really wanna make sure that we have clear goals, which, which, um, I, I didn't feel coming in, right?
Ms. Sabios, that's exact, we're, we're actually saying exactly the same thing we're saying, you know, so we know there are some basic, um, basics not the word, but some needs that we know our students need. We know the research is saying this, our community is saying this. You know, we know social emotional learning or, or just, you know, wellness supports for our students, that's necessary. We know that we need to have some, um, academics accelerations, that's necessary. We know those things. But to your point, we don't want to just allocate money and just spend without being clear on where we're going in relation to those elements, right? So what, what we're saying is very much the same thing you're saying. We're gonna, we've got our short-term goals, if you will. Mr. Irvin will do his listening and learning campaign. We've got, um, you know, we're going to assess actually where our students are at. All of that will come together and we will then be bringing that back to the board um, with much more clarity, intentionality, and the monitoring systems behind it.
Okay, perfect. So then, so then good, we're on the same page, it sounds like in terms of that. And then just very lastly, um, I do wanna get, um, a counselor, um, to student ratio, what that current, currently looks like across the district as well as a school psychology to, to student ratio as well. And that's it. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Vias. And Ms. Rusas Medina, you have a comment and then you indicated you also have a question.
Yes. Um, with regards to the outcomes, thank you, Madam President. Uh, regarding to the outcomes, we've been working on this for, um, many years and I know, and that's my question goes back to, um, Dr. Volcomer. Is that looking at outcomes based for vendors and so forth? Uh, and then even within our own school district. So we have, and maybe, um, this is something good for Mr. Irwin to uh, know is that we have been working on it. I know Mr. Volcomer, Dr. Volcomer has been working on this. Um, and I'm curious to find out, um, as you're leaving, Dr. Volcomer and I really gonna miss um, some of the things that you already know automatically within the school district. Who will be taking over that? Uh, because it seems like even with, um, uh, a few of the staff, they're not, either they're not familiar with it cuz it shouldn't have to come from me asking you. You should have been already, someone already should have heard about it. So who would be taking that role with looking at the outcome space?
Thank you, Ms. Rusals Medina. Great que, great question. I'm gonna, I'm gonna approach it actually from two, kinda two angles. For vendors specifically, board, you'll remember you asked for, and we developed a program evaluation for vendors. Barbara Richardson was a, a major player in that. Uh, and then just about the time, really, we were getting knee-deep into that work, COVID hit. Um, and, uh, and then Barbara left, obviously. And so Michelle Cleveland by, by nature would, would be the one to pick up the ball and, uh, start working through the program evaluation um, process for our vendors. It's very well defined, it's very clear. Uh, you'll remember a couple of years ago when we put it together, we had your input, we had input from the vendors, we had input from our, from our internal stakeholders to build a system that we think will work so that when, when, when you're asked to make a decision about a vendor, vendor, it's really about outcomes. And so even though, you know, that person may be, you know, a wonderful person in the community and, you know, we love them, but their program isn't producing. You can say, this is not about you personally, this is about your program. And either you gotta get your program up to speed or we're not gonna be able to buy it anymore. Um, and so we do have that in place. We probably need to kinda re-kickstart it just because
Right. And Dr. Volcomer, just so that you know, I have been meeting with Mr. Koenig and with Ms. Cleveland. And we are looking at the process, where, what, what we're looking at are the metrics. So what specifically are we using to measure success? Cuz some of that can be quantitative, some of it is qualitative. So we need to kinda take a look at what metrics we're using, but we have already met on it. And so the system is still there. As with other systems, we're trying to improve them and streamline them so that, um, they're not as labor intensive, but we have some good metrics to, to be able to judge um, the work of the vendors.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Applegate. And then the other thing I would add, board, to, to keep in the discussion is you've worked very hard over the last number of years on, on key performance indicators. You'll remember years and years ago, when the original community engagement plan came out, we had like, I don't know, forty or fifty key performance indicators. We were way too ambitious. And then we've, we've slowly but surely culled it down to a workable number that's exactly aligned, exactly aligned to the state accountability system. And, and you'll remember that you get a monthly update on one of those KPIs at the, typically the second board meeting of each month. If you wanna continue that process so that those, those high-level indicators, graduation rate, dropout rate, A to G rate, suspension and expulsion, citation, all those things that are, you know, really high level and typically wind up in the news. Um, you get regular information on those. And then tied to those are, here's the data. And we always provide it to you by program and by student group. So you know that it's not one group carrying another and we can, we can really, um, approach equity, uh, issues. Uh, and then you, we always talk about what we're gonna do next and what it will cost. So you have much of this system in place. Uh, Mr. Irvin is very skilled in terms of, of implementation and improvement science. And so he'll be able to add, add to that and work with you to build that, build that system and make it, uh, more robust and probably more clear.
Right. And then I appreciate you giving that updates that way, Ms. Vias can see that we have a, a model out there. So then transitioning that model, and I, I thank you, uh, Ms. Applegate, for also, I'm sharing how you're trying to, um, look at the metrics. And then once we have that solidified, then it's how do we move that towards other departments as well? And, and it'll be an easy transition to getting an outcomes-based report, um, through action items and consent items and so forth. Um, the intention is, is how we're using our money and how we're spending our money wisely. And we can't make that executive decision if we don't know how these programs are working. So we are moving in that direction. I just wanna make sure before Dr. Volcomer leaves that the district is continuing that. And I'm, I'm glad to hear, um, Ms. Applegate is, um, working on that. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other questions. And pretty much you guys, uh, answered everything I was going to say. But I do wanna emphasize, cuz I just wrote down again on those, and I've mentioned this to you, um, Mr. Irvin, about how we pre-COVID, you know, we had KPIs and we would get regular updates. And the request was to get those updates, not at the end of the year, but throughout the year, so we can gauge what we needed to correct and what we needed to make adjustments early on. So that's a practice that is kinda, you know, already here embedded and maybe you can tweak it or get with the team and see what works. But that is how we're able to see that information ahead. COVID, think about it, it's been over a year and we just had to stop, pause, and everything was about COVID. But we were regularly getting those things that, as, as Dr. Volcomer worked towards and they, and it really worked because it allowed us to give input on those specific things, not everything all at the same time, because it's a lot. But when we break it down, you're gonna speak on this tonight, it was very helpful. And then the only other thing that I would add to is, and, and it's been said, so I won't go on and on about it, but we definitely want to be able to look at the funding that we have coming in and just get our wellness centers to scale or add to or whatever we need to do. I mean, already prior to receiving this money, we were receiving awards on it. We've been, um, pretty much in the forefront of it when others weren't. And so having it, having the framework of it without the other things that come with it, now's the time ever. And we know how much it was needed. And I can't emphasize enough how our board already foresaw that prior to even this happening where we're anticipating, what is it gonna look like and how is it going to look? So I, I again would say, as you build that out to, to show us, what are we gonna do? What are we gonna add? And how can we make the wellness centers just really a reality here in our district as well? So I'm not seeing any other, oh, Dr. Flores, oh. Okay, so before we move to our, um, three point two, three point two, um, Dr. Irvin is going to, or Ms. Doc Irvin is gonna ask a, a question. Um, you know, we don't, it's not gonna spend a lot of time on it. But, um, Dr. Volcomer, I don't know if you might be more abreast to, um, Dr. Flores's question. I know we talked about it, I think a, a week or two ago, and you had shared some information with me, so.
Right. So the, the question for those of you, uh, those who can't see it is, as our buildings, uh, sat empty for a long time, we know what happens to empty buildings, right? Critters find their way in, uh, and, uh, do some, you know, not so fun things. And so uh, we've been very mindful and, and intent on that in terms of bringing people back. And that's really the best way to keep critters out is when they, when people are shuffling around, they go other places. I'll turn it over to Janie to talk about some of the specific actions that we've taken to make sure that our buildings are safe for our, for our team members.
We did have specific locations that you may be referring to that we've worked very closely with, um, owners of the building and surrounding buildings. So that is pretty much under control. It's not perfect, right? And I know, uh, Sam and Joe and the team have worked closely with our in-house uh, folks as well as where we need to contract to get this all under control. So I haven't heard anything recently and we've had people coming back. So I will check, um, touch bases with the team, Dr. Flores, but I haven't heard anything lately.
Well, I get notices and I get intel from different people and I'm not gonna tell you who. And I refer them back to the principal to report them to you. So, um,
Work orders then.
Just not, it's not just one or two, it's several. So that's probably why you haven't seen them, but they are, there are rodents everywhere. And I don't, you know, I don't know how you get, um, I don't know how you get rid of them, but I mean, they're, you know, they're nesting, they um, I mean, I get pictures of, of different things. So, um, I just refer them back to, um, you know, letting their principals know or whoever so that they can get, um, with, get rid of them. But they're, it is problematic.
So I tell everyone, don't leave food out, whatever you do. If you have a snack, don't leave it out because they'll, they'll find it. But thank you, Dr. Flores, and I know
No, they're eating cardboard and paper. They're eating cardboard and paper, so. And, and cords. Uh, our, our cords, you know, the computer cords, electrical cords, et cetera, so. Anyway, hopefully those work orders get, uh, I don't know how you expedite them, but, um,
Those are expedited, yes.
Yeah, I think you need to maybe send out a, a notice that, uh, for them to, you know, start repointing it so that they can, uh, address it. Because I think the droppings are not good. And they carry diseases, so.
Thank you, Dr. Flor- Flores for that. Okay, and so please put that at the top. I, I, I'm gonna, I saw you. I just was gonna say again, please put that at the top of the list and you know, Mr. Irvin, you're, you're hearing it as well, so, you know.
Yeah, and I was gonna say that because that's, because it's a special, uh, meeting on the budget. Uh, that's not an agenda's topic. We're gonna go on, on that. I would, I would, I would say that we would have to bring that to another meeting.
Make, if you could just not
I'll just put that on our list.
Put it on the note, just the note.
Right, because, thank you.
Yes, just a note. Mr. Tillman?
It's related to the safety of the buildings, Mr. Irvin.
Well, I'll, I'll take it from a, from a budget perspective. I just wanna make sure that Ms. Dr. Flores does contact Mr. Irvin cuz it's important for the committee to know that if someone's contacted Dr. Flores, that Mr. Irvin's gonna ensure that those specific sites get taken care of. This is a major thing because parents wanna make sure that they, their kids are going back to a school that's safe. And, and this, there's no problem in doing it now because this is part of the budget process. And, and I gotta, and
Agree.
It gives me a, a, a ability to say that the Biden administration, I think, did a great job by giving us this funding and the Congress and Senate to give us this, this funding to deal with these type of issues. The, the, the pandemic caused problems. The additional money is to mitigate the problems that it caused. This happens to be one of the problems. All the other things we talked about tonight are, are the reasons why we have an additional funding. Because we know we had a year of learning that wasn't at the level that it should have been because of the pandemic. The goal is use that money to do some catch-up, including, uh, taking care of our buildings and facilities. So I think it's, it's right on time. And that's the reason why I asked for this, um, extra budget meeting to ensure that we're gonna use this money to address those type of issues. Thank you.
And I'll add it to my list. And, and Dr. Flores, uh, I'll reach out to you. And, and, and you're right, Dr., uh, Mr. Tillman. Uh, some of those S or dollars can be used to address the facility-related e, uh, issues. Dr. Flores, you are correct. And so therefore, I will say very quickly, we did talk about school beautification, looking at facilities. I, I was at a school site today. And I believe that all of our schools gotta be at the highest level of professional excellence. And so I will be addressing that. I've already made some phone calls. So I agree with you, Dr. Flores. So I'll talk with you, Dr. Flores, offline uh, to get that information. And again, that will be part of our program going forward, which is school beautification. So, thank you.
All right. Okay, thank you for that. And we will move to three point two, board retreat.
Yeah, and I, and I think one of the things here, um, I know that the board, I, I noted the board, um, we've talked about a board retreat. So what I'd really need to know from the board is, um, offline, can you send me just a list of dates that you are available, mainly Saturdays between now and August second? I think the goal is, it would be nice for us to get a board retreat and hopefully this month, if we could do it this month as soon as possible, maybe uh, around July twenty-six, I believe, if I got the date correctly. Let me look at the date again. Yes, July twenty-six, which is a Saturday. But I know not everyone can make it. And I know some of you have indicated that you're going to be on vacation. So what I need to know from the board, is there two to three Saturdays between now and the first day of school, August second, that we can do a board retreat? Um, and I, and I think a Saturday seems to make more sense because I know during the workday, all of our board members are, 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 are working and it's gonna be challenging. Um, but if we can, and, and don't worry about some retreat topics, we're not talking about that today. We're still gonna work behind the scenes. I'll work with the board president, the board vice, and, and vice president and get board members input on the, on the topics. We'll work on that. But I just need to know the dates.
Um, Mr., Madam President, may I, I, I don't wanna ask, uh, Mr. Irvin a question. I thought it was June twenty-sixth, Saturday.
That was a great day, but I think someone could make it, I believe.
We had one board member that
Who can't make it? Who can't make it? And it, it's all day you can't make it, Scott?
Yes, so we, we
What day, what day can you make, Scott?
Well, but the date that he can make now might not be good for someone else. That's why we said we would ask for those Saturdays, so then he can
The, the date I provided, I could attend, someone else can't.
Yes. What date is that?
I think it was the tenth. Let me look.
So we had July tenth and, and seventeenth. I'm on vacation.
So yes, Dr. Flores has given us her, so if we can just look at those additional Saturdays, look at it from there.
The best way to do it is to go, we got the calendar in front of us. Let's just go through each Saturday and see what Saturday we can make. We'll be done with it.
Well, the other Saturday is the nineteenth.
Who can't make the nineteenth?
I, I can't, I'm sorry.
Okay, what about June twenty-sixth?
That's the one that, that, uh, God can't.
Okay, uh, how about July third? I'm just kidding. I just throw it out there cuz Dr. Rogers did say go through
I can make July twenty-fourth and thirty-first.
Okay, July twenty-fourth.
I could do that.
Okay, I'm not gonna give an answer at this point cuz I don't
So that's why, and, and we act really honestly, and, and, and Dr. Wyatt, I know your schedule is crazy with the So if we would just be able to just send some dates and then, you know, as I've asked, um, Superintendent Irvin to look at those dates, because that, the more we were going back and forth, we want people to know it when they're gonna be on or when they're gonna be off. And, but we want everyone there. That's, that's the goal for sure.
It's important. We have a new board member, we have a new superintendent. It really provides an opportunity for all of us to calibrate. And also we have, um, Mr. Sellens is new as well. It gives us a chance to calibrate um, with the team, the executive leadership team and the board, our new board member and obviously our newest member, Mr. Sellens. We all get a chance to cali- calibrate. So um, if, 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 Dr. Wyatt, if you can get back with us and let me know if either the seventeen So, um, if, 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 if Dr. Wyatt, if you can get back with us and let me know if either the seventeenth or the twenty-fourth would work. Uh, just let me know, does anyone here has any issues with the seventeenth of July or the twenty-fourth?
I won't be able to meet in person, I could either do a Zoom, I wouldn't be able to meet in person. I'm actually leaving the, the thirteen all the way to the twenty-first, July.
Yeah, I'm not available on the seventeenth, uh, but I am, I'll, I'll say, who do we send the dates to, Karen?
You, um, you can send them directly to me.
You want them directly or you want her to be able to Google, doodle, doodle them together?
Oh, yeah, go ahead and send them to Karen, that's fine.
And I just looked, I'm off the week before, so I'm, I'm out for July seventeenth as well.
What about the twenty-fourth?
I, I have to check, but I know.
I think it will be better if they just send the dates.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, I, yeah. So if we could just, just send, if we send the dates and then that way they can weed it down all the way through August, you know, we'll just.
So just to clarify, Madam President, we're sending the dates to Karen?
Yes.
Yes, to Karen.
All right, okay.
Send your dates of availability or non-availability to Karen. And then we've been trying to do that for a couple of weeks, so we want to respect everybody's time on and off.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, Superintendent Irvin, do you have what you need? You will get it.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure, but you know, I, I don't want to throw this, I don't want to ask this question, but I was gonna say, do we want to do it on a weekday? But I, I know we can't.
Yeah.
I don't think no one's available during the weekday, so.
We just want to cut, because Saturday gives us a longer timeframe.
Right, Saturday gives us all day.
Right, okay, that was his, that was his posing question. The next, uh, thing is, is four point one, adjournment. Again, we want, we want to again congratulate and welcome, uh, Superintendent Irvin and is, oh yeah, Harold, there you are, you're still on. So welcome to you as well, and then the other Harold is still on too, so thank you for all you do. And thank the whole team, this was great, this was good for us, a good start. So we appreciate you all for all of your information. And good night and God bless, have a week, rest of the week, see you on Tuesday.